Good evening, I'd like to call the regular bill. I'll go by please. Uh, date is eight twenty first order. Can I have a roll call please?
Yes. Or. Alali? Mercy?
Yeah.
Littleowski?
Frederick?
Frederick?
Here. Alali is accused and I'm not sure, um, if she's still in charge of it. We know how many of them are. I'm.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for the reverend meeting minutes? It is April fifteenth. Support. Michael Jackson, support back those items in that discussion. Kinga, call the ball. Jackson?
Yes.
Mercy?
Yes.
Littleowski?
Yeah.
Frederick?
Yes.
Yes. Paul will let the record reflect that on May seventh nineteen twenty five, there was no meeting due to lack of forums. Um, table items, I need a motion to remove the table never Jones, uh, to the parking rack position. Jackson? Call go please.
Yes.
Mercy?
Yes.
Littleowski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Yes. And I have a motion to find Denver Jones to the parking rack position. Um. Not coming chief. I don't know when the term retiring is, so. I believe so. But I'm kind of cheap.
Well, that's kind of right.
Yeah.
And it's like.
It wasn't on there either.
Oh, she's done.
And I was allowed on your part? Not on my turn? Where you're going, I always does the eight. Um, yeah, I said, you know, I filled that in, you just know, so. I can do that.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
What, from Parks and.
Oh, yeah. What's the dates? My rehearsal expires, he goes in.
For, hold on, I got enough for everybody.
Can't avoid.
I'm hair. I'm. She's.
Um, all right. All right. All right, now what I'm trying to do is. So. We could do eleven eighteen twenty five. Yeah, that's, um. The number is with a nine nine. Eleven eighteen twenty six or eleven seventeen twenty seven. There did have to be three. You have to know exactly. If you were in it, I'll give it.
Three. Three bacon.
Now. Honoris Smith expires eleven eighteen twenty one six. So, term expiring eleven eighteen twenty two six.
Is it that?
Yeah. So, then you say the unexpired term. Move by Filipowski. Could I have a support? Supported by Christopher. In this session.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Second or third straight being in the form. Trying to plan these hundred year celebration as in we are not playing in the last four. So.
How are you then?
Um, how many people on the issue right now?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six.
Six, only this constitute four.
Yeah. Well, we have two that are off due to surgery. Um, lately you've had three showing up.
No, four.
For me, or four.
Maybe five.
Five, they have a forum. So.
So, the cheers.
Yes.
So, we have five. We have six now.
They have six.
One is not sure that one is out surgery now, she's coming back as well. Out of somebody. She's.
Twenty six. She's not sworn in though.
Yeah, she hasn't sworn in yet. Um, she will be kind of shooting. Still right now, even if we don't have them show up right now, we still have five.
No, no.
Show up.
No, we don't have five.
Yeah, they're out because of surgery, so only three show up. Tracy, you're ready? And Linda Adams.
They're still on the, they're still. Yeah.
Right. So you guys want this under celebration or not?
There's nine positions on this.
Yeah, so five have to be here for a forum.
We have three baits. So what I'm saying is you got, you got Mark. That's here.
Matt.
And Matt, that's four, that's four right there. Five. And Matt worked at, uh. He was.
He needs five. Absolutely. Dan, you were on that mission. Through the chair. Through the chair? Yes. Go ahead. Dan, you were on that mission so by you. There weren't patterns when you had left on that?
Oh, yeah.
In your forum to get things done, you know, and you wanted a hundred year celebration and without a forum, things don't move forward. So. Any other discussion? Kinga, call go.
Jackson?
No.
Mercy?
No.
Littleowski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Frederick?
No. All right. Um, communications, public safety.
Good evening. So, uh, first on the, uh, agenda, um, it was a quote from code three, uh, for services for Melvinville days. Um, so I have a request, uh, motion to approve the quote for nine thousand seven hundred dollars and forty four. Nine thousand seven hundred forty four dollars. Um, this includes four days of code three armed security guards. Um, they are going to be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They'll have six guards on Thursday, um, they'll be staying overnight watching all the equipment. Um, and then they'll have ten officers on Friday, ten officers on Saturday, and ten officers on Sunday. Um, their functions are assisting the Melvinville police by maintaining order, enforcing rules, um, reporting any suspicious activity, assist with crime control. Um, they'll be on patrol bicycles, patrol UTVs, but the mobile command center, all the security guards were body cameras. Um, this is the third year that we're going to be requesting their services. They gave us the same quote as they did last year. Um, we had one incident last year that we arrested somebody, um. We, we asked this because we are low on, um, manpower. We have dropped our manpower down from three officers to two. Um, and the fireworks is, as you, you guys all know, it's a, it's a big event. A lot of people there, um, reserve officers, Michigan State Police, they're not guaranteed to come. If we hire them, they are guaranteed to be there. So last year, I think we had three Michigan State troopers, two reserve officers, and another three from here. So, I don't think you can, you know, put a price tag on the safety of our ships, so that's why we're requesting.
The chair.
Can I get a motion out of court?
Please.
Thank you. Moved by Frederick, supported by Filipowski.
I don't have no questions. Yes, um, how many agencies have been contacted?
Uh, we contacted, uh, me personally or other officers. We've had, well, way coming, Michigan State Police, um, in there. One.
And that, we were, and that's what we have, that's what we have regarding the Melvinville days prior to the year, the year, two years ago.
Yes, again, but they're not guaranteed to come. Michigan State Police, even though I spoke to a sergeant last year and he said they were very low on officers, we asked them if they could come and they only sent three officers. So, we are not guaranteed really anything with them. Cause we're not paying them, even though we do have a mutual aid contract with them. They're not guaranteed.
The chair.
Yes.
But that's. Did you want? Put it up there?
No, we didn't.
Oh, we talked.
No. No, because we.
It's not with the national for, yeah, for them.
Well, we hired, we fired them for, this is the third year that we fired them. They, they grew all down river as well, I mean, they could hire sailors, um, small agencies.
Through the chair. Yes.
Um, I pulled all of the payments that we've made to them in twenty twenty three, they did it for fifty six hundred dollars.
Okay.
In twenty twenty four, it was seventy nine hundred dollars. Now this year, the quote is ninety seven hundred dollars.
I spoke to Mike and he said it was the same exact.
Not the same.
Okay.
I remember that.
Or.
I pulled all the information, I pulled the invoices, and I pulled the payments. It's not the same.
Do you have those with you?
Uh, you can pull up the meeting minutes, it's in the meeting minutes. Okay, I'll do that. But.
Also, is this, uh, years past that we offer overtime and stuff like that, do we get outbid costs?
Well, see, so the overtime is, yeah, so we're gonna have an, we're gonna have to have at least one officer overnight to watch the equipment. Um, and then they're gonna have six on, uh, Thursday, ten on, I mean, that's just, there's no way we can send ten officers. Um, and we only have maybe, maybe four officers. So, yeah, so there's gonna be overtime.
The chair, last, uh, last Melvinville days, how many police officers did we have on duty out? What's our current number of law enforcement officers right now?
What, see, that number varies a little bit because we have eighteen officers that are currently, that, that can work, that are not on workman's comp, or they're not, um, on duty disability or administrative.
And you heard the last year one.
I, I don't know those numbers from last year, I don't know the exact numbers, but I do know that we did get an officer of all duty and we lost four, we lost three officers and an officer of all duty, they were unable to work, uh, an officer COVID, she was unable to work. Um, we were, I, I can only remember off top of my head, maybe eight officers that were down there. And they were very, very, very low. And thankfully that they were there.
This year, we've got more officers, we've hired officers.
We've, we've hired more officers, however, that eighteen includes, um, four that are on FTO, which they have to be with some, another sworn officer, they cannot be by themselves, including the chief in that as well. Um, he is safe. Um. Crystal, I include in that, she's on a surgery leave, so I don't know exactly when the date she's coming back. So that's why I say that that number plus ways.
The chief, who's one message is, because we got a lot more, we got a lot more officers now, and then in the past years, we actually did not rely on any outside agency to cover up Melvinville days. We hired Michigan State Police, or, uh, Michigan State Police, the Valley Police, and Wayne County, which is here tonight. And, uh, we saved those, well, because we had low officers those years. And because of COVID, because of the, because we were, uh, twenty minutes, we hired this agency. And by. Our threats, uh, our threats, uh, inquiries, uh, it's went from fifty six hundred dollars all the way up to almost ten thousand dollars. And the thing is that we're not pulling it out a bit. We're not going to any other agencies. So.
Well, to be, to be honest, I don't know any other security companies that, that handle criminals, do you? Do you have some?
Just I have a chair right now.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Okay, absolutely, I mean, yeah. If you guys, if you guys wanna hear that?
We have a motion on the floor.
I didn't, we've gone with them for three years already, just why, why now? Is it, is it a price or is there a problem with the three?
Well, once again, it's, while it's, it's increasing the price, I mean, come to the mic tonight, you said, hey, it's the same as it was last year.
That's what we had, I didn't have.
Once again, um.
Okay, we're moving on.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, there are any other discussion? Kinga, call go.
Jackson?
No.
Mercy?
No.
Littleowski?
No.
Frederick?
Yes.
Frederick?
No.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is the motion to close Grayfield and Allen, um, so June eighth is the day of the fireworks, do you like that? Uh, motion to close Grayfield and Allen from PPM till midnight?
Soon.
Move by Filipowski, supported by Jackson, in this session. Kinga, call go.
Jackson?
Yes.
Mercy?
Yes.
Littleowski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the next on the agenda is the policy changes for the gym. Um, after doing some research, we had, um, officers that were only allowed to use the gym, sworn officers. Um, we reconvened and we spoke with the, uh, person that donated the gym from Planet Fitness, um, and they said that supplemental officers are allowed to use the gym, except they can't be open to the public. So we like to change, we did change that through the, um, Public Safety Commission to include, um, police personnel or, um, personnel for, uh, police department, including animal control ordinance and motor carrier personnel. And the reason we did that is, uh, a couple reasons. Um, one, the main one being is that the gym is used for physical exercise, um, and physical fitness, and all three of those are included in those job performances. So we'd like to include that and have those officers for animal control ordinance and motor carriers included.
And motion on go please?
I'm gonna motion. So, is there a person more?
Thank you. Frederick? Move back Frederick and move back to the house. All right.
The chair, so I thought the last time you raised a hand, it's probably just say all the employees, well, the department. And, or, or either or, just sworn officers. So it was either all or, or just sworn officers.
Okay.
You want Jessica to come on?
Yeah, yeah, Jessica.
Come on this?
Yeah, so she, she was, um, she's been very instrumental in, in, um, going through this gym process. Um, so, yeah, we just probably just some confusion, we did talk to the chief, like I said, we did reconvene with the person who owned Planet Fitness, and they said that he is open for that supplemental officers, including motor carrier, ordinance, and animal control.
We do, yeah, this is what we discussed, also, has, corporate counsel, have you had a copy of that? From my purpose, so that we can make sure that this is, so we can make sure that this is under the guidelines of what I do it says. You have, you have my.
Very, very.
So, yeah.
And the thing, the thing, I think we did give this to the office, but I'm not aware of the change. I, I, I was under the impression that it was only supposed to be sworn officers. And, and then, uh, assistant chief, uh, our team has did come to the safety commission and indicate that we spoke to people at Planet Fitness and they were okay with having, uh, animal control, lane master, and ordinance.
Well, unless it's more, it's more officers, as we've discussed before, or hired Stephen and, uh, ordinance officers, and ordinance officers made sense. Cause you guys, um, come on shaking, you carry firearms, you carry limelight, you carry stuff on your person. And that was one of the main reasons why we needed to get that gym secured and that sworn officer would run to be the group that was going to be using that gym.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm not sure of the exact protocol, so if I'm speaking on a turn, I apologize. So, we should, I do have a short, a short paragraph that I prepared that might explain something. Oh, and then after which I can, I can distribute copies of the corrective policy. So, the entire gym came about from, from a grant that I pursued through Planet Fitness, so I've been with the projects since inception, really, and all the way through. The liability waiver I offered, the policy I offered. So, these issues with the policy are due to my shortcomings and in working it, okay? I should have split hairs a little more and been a little more specific on this. So, if anyone helps me, which is a couple minutes of your time, I'll, I'll, I'll be what I prefer, that'll explain things a bit more. Thank you. During the Planet Fitness gym donation process, it became known that the gift was intended only for the police department. They have made other such donations to agencies in the past, each agency was advised that the equipment was meant for their use only. In the course of drafting a policy for the gym, it was originally stated that members of the police department would include animal control, ordinance, and motor carrier personnel. The drug officers was thus defined as not to be sworn members, but also to include the supplemental personnel. Some confusion arose last month as to the question of authorized use where officers resulted in a change of the policy to exclude supplemental personnel and apply to sworn officers only. It was my belief at that time that only sworn officers were acceptable under the Planet Fitness guidelines and that their donation was predicated upon this specific definition. Excuse me. I conducted further research into the matter and consulted with Planet Fitness, learning that they admitted that only police personnel could be allowed to access the gym. The definition of police personnel was left to be established by the department itself. The mistake then is in the use of the term officers. The correct terminology should have been written as police department personnel. Accordingly, the policy has been corrected to include motor carrier, ordinance, and animal control, and all authorized users are now referred to as police department personnel or simply personnel. As the primary author of the policy, I apologize for the time that has had to be taken to clarify the mistakes I made when writing the original policy, and I hope we can pass that revisions be accepted and the policy approved. I have a corrected copy of that policy, very good.
Okay, through the chair. Yes. Um, I have requested several times the actual paperwork from Planet Fitness. From them, not from my department, not from.
Correct.
That, I don't know.
They don't actually have a policy? I admitted one of our application that you filled out.
Or some other applications. Okay, so there's no paperwork or anything from them specified. So there's nothing specified, and you're saying now that you're changing it to be police department personnel?
Yes, they've said that, that we can set the definition for police department personnel.
Okay, police department personnel is anybody on the payroll for police department. Projectarily of what?
Secretaries.
They, 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 it's city hall, we already said that, that's from the city hall, so they're not city, they're not police employee.
Oh, they're not.
The chair, I would like to respond to that, because when she first walked in there, Tara.
Okay.
She said that she couldn't work there because she had to take care of some business. Um, well, she is clerical, well, but she said she's gonna be on the lean system, she's in here with us, so there's a little, I, I guess, I see her being police personnel, looking at this and having.
Can you see?
System, that's all.
Sure.
According to, um, the table, any person.
Here we go.
Under that department, based on police department personnel, should be allowed to use it.
Well, we, but we've also, he's, we did, we didn't hire an administrator, that comes from city hall, and he's, he's, you also, he did say.
Exactly.
When he said, or heard him work here, because, so that didn't matter with her.
You do know crossing guards.
No, 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 she will be working on them.
But, again, the reason for the gym is for physical fitness, the crossing guards, and they.
They don't need physical fitness?
They don't need physical fitness to perform as their duties. For, for handling that, for handling that.
They're standing on their feet, waiting for children across the street today.
Okay.
I think that it should be everybody or nobody. You're including part-time seasonal personnel in your thing, but you're not paying for the other.
So listen, you're, you're, you're telling me a crossing guard is gonna need to use a physical and perform as their duties as opposed to an animal control officer or an ordinance officer that.
We don't employ animal control officers. We employ ordinance officers that also do animal control.
So, excuse me, everybody, if I can answer, are you, are you, are you suggesting then that the full definition should include the crossing guards and the clerical for just personnel?
Everybody on the police department payroll. For that department, they're listed as employed through that department, they should be included, their police department personnel, they should all be included. You shouldn't be allowed, they can choose who you're gonna let use it and whom you're not. It's either veteran officers or everybody.
Man, actually, this, this, to approve a policy goes to the public safety department, they've already proved it.
We have to come.
It doesn't even have to come, it's a whole body, it's everybody, it does not have to come here.
It does have to come.
No, it doesn't.
The only thing.
You tried.
The only thing that doesn't come to council is choosing to keep. Everything else has to come through council. They make the resolution, and then we have to either deny or concur with what they've done.
Ever been policies in the past that have been approved by council?
Yeah.
Police department policies?
Yes.
Of, of every single policy. Okay, so there's the revisions of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Every policy, every revision, they come here.
Through Jersey.
Russell, do you have something to say?
This gym was for officers, it's, it actually got named for, it's a place for us to get together. Um, not for you guys, not for the cross lady, she said, how dare they use my name? How dare? Who? She actually wanted to come here and call you out. How dare? I have no interest, Tara told me the same exact thing, I have no interest in, but it's just the point that you guys are doing this just gets against the players, so it doesn't make sense, it's embarrassing right now.
That's not right.
Right now, and what's going on?
Point of order.
That's it.
Exactly.
This vote, and let's see who votes against it.
You.
Let's see who votes.
Hold on a second. Okay. Everybody good? Go ahead.
It's not that anyone is on the police radar.
Just vote, just vote.
Because we, we're not. It's not that, we're trying to make sure everything is in order. We tell you this over and over again, we're covering ourselves, make sure everything is in order, that's why we keep asking to see the original contract. We keep asking to see the original, the, uh, original, um, uh, the original, uh, yeah, yeah, was that? No, no, no. The, um.
Sir, I, 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 I'll turn everything that we got from Planet Fitness, all, all the, all the signed forms?
Yes. My, my problem, the problem with this is, it's like, this, this, why is it such a big issue to approve everyone that's under the department? I don't understand that.
We don't want them.
They're not gonna come, if you, you said they don't have any interest in coming, then they don't have any interest in coming. Just include them to cover ourselves, that's it, it's, it's no big deal.
So.
It's no big deal.
So, I don't understand what the big deal is about it just being.
Why, why? Okay, okay, if that's the case, then how is a ordinance officer?
Oh, you just said it, ordinance.
Yes. We went on, you said physical.
I don't get sure, no one is respecting what I've said.
No, I'm just, you know, I'm saying, I, I, so does a crossing guard, so does anybody, that's what I'm trying to tell you, that's, that's what she said. I'm just saying that it's not just a department.
I, I, what's the point? I don't, I don't think any police department has crossing guards using their gym, some people, they know that even certified, uh, they don't even have policy. This company is okay.
And, and actuality, listen, in reality, and, and we're supposed to go, we're supposed to go and forth with him in the, in reality, ordinance should be given under the department. They should be on DPDW. So, why just be, that's, that's, that's reality.
What?
Well, that's. So, I'm just saying, let's just do something, just, just get, just get the ball rolling, let's just.
No, no.
That's in the department. With your side.
If I could, if I could make some comments to answer to that.
Okay.
First of all, I'll get the unprecedented, sort of, in the off of the way, there was no specific, like, application or anything. I was looking for funding, and as a joke to a friend, I said, Google has the answer to everything, how do I get funding for a fish gym? And it produced this video that showed that Planet Fitness had built a gym for DPD, I don't want to come there. I got the CEO's name from this particular video and emailed him, and to my surprise, he got back to me within two days and said, sure, we'd love to do that for Melvinville. I was just asking about a grant process, I said, hey, if, if you guys have a grant for which we could apply, that would be great. So there is no original grant application, that's, that's the first thing, so there's no paperwork from where it originally, if you'd like to see the email from two and a half years ago, I'm happy to show that to you, sir, or forward it to you, okay?
No.
But, and then, and then from that point, we, it just went on from there, there was no paperwork produced until the donation. But, and, and then, and then from that point, we, it just went on from there, it was, there was no paperwork produced until the donation occurred. If, at which time the city had to sign off on it, the department had to sign off on it specifically saying, yes, we took receipt of these machines, they give us an inventory with all the serial numbers and everything, they needed some sort of tax form, I'm not great with tax stuff, so I'm not really sure what that was, that was produced by the city and given to Planet Fitness, that's all the paperwork that exists, that's number one. That's not what it's, that's, that's, this is a multi-part, this is a multi-part, so, so your patience just a little bit longer, please. I have no personal issue whatsoever with crossing guards and clerical personnel being included. I have no problem with that whatsoever. Ordinarily, departments that have gyms will include the police officers from the new hires up to the chief of police, any civilian dispatchers they may have on site, and their ordinance, animal control, which usually, even if they should be under a different division, a lot of places they carry them under the police department, because in many cases they're radio dispatch and on twenty-four hour call, which is the case with our businesses. So as far as the definition for the warrant police personnel, I have no problem personally with expanding that to include them, but that's a decision that's out of my hands. I am not the chief or the deputy chief or commander or anything, I'm just the person who wrote the policy and wasn't clear enough. That's all.
So, if, if that is the case, if there isn't the original grant, anytime.
Correct.
That's the case.
It's an understanding of who they do and do not, because you see, Planet Fitness is a business. So if they donated a gym and everybody in Malvernale was open to use it, well, then there goes a potential opportunity to do business, right? I mean, they, they collect fees, they run a business, they profit, they, right? These donations, first of all, the ordinance used, it's all equipment from Planet Fitnesses that have been upgraded and everything like that. They do the initial maintenance and everything on that, they, they install it, they ordinarily, let me see if I can take it back a little bit, their original, their original commitment was just to provide the equipment. We would have had to have gone and picked it up, prepped the space, installed the equipment, maintained the equipment. After Mo Sa'eed was killed, they decided they wanted to do all of this extra that they've done, with the paint, the lighting, the flooring, the transportation installation, in his honor for us, okay? So their gift already was generous, and then they went above and beyond after his murder to kind of do something for us on his behalf. We're. I, I have to confess, with, with, with all, with all of the ugliness that has surrounded this in the past months, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry I even inquired, really, it's, it's gotten to that point thus here, because it, it just, there's so much opposition to the smallest things sometimes. It's wearing me down, I really felt not much longer I could be under police officers.
That's it.
Not under, and, and that, that's, that's the extent of. And, um, I may excuse myself in this, because he's.
Okay, sorry, let, 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 let's, let me put it in the job. Let me just do this, let's open it up to all, all personnel, police personnel, okay?
No.
Is there any, some public respect, please, let's, why don't you guys, when we're writing the policy, come in and join us? So we don't even get up here and go through this, wasting everybody's time.
I agree.
So why don't you guys come in when we're writing these policies and help us out?
Excuse me, chair, are there motions to table this?
How much is a crossing guard's equipment worth?
I'm pretty sure there's a motion already on the floor.
There's a motion, we're already seated.
No, it wasn't, there's actually a motion on the floor already.
So.
You see.
So we're going to go ahead and call the vote.
I will.
There's a, no, we're going to go ahead and call the vote.
I didn't, I didn't.
Because. You have to call the vote.
Well, I, I've answered, we've represented, we're, we are observed, you know, all kinds, you know what?
Because you want to interrupt me, you want to interrupt.
I'm going to interrupt you myself, can I have the floor?
Sure.
Through the chair.
Are you finished? Are you finished?
Through the chair.
You knew.
Hey, order. Go ahead.
What's my name? Go ahead, who, pull the record.
Go ahead, Mr. Mercy.
There you go, thank you. Um, that means, was it, was it their grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you applied for two years ago, what, were the few individuals? Yeah, sorry, man.
The chair, we were, we were appropriation of the state of Michigan, and we had the engineer do all, and the gym was going to be in some locker rooms where it was already not in there.
We had this gym designed so that we're going to two locker rooms, there are two, four locker rooms, and then we had to put the, after hiding and get it apart. That would be very, that would be very, that was a very secure area. For the security that they mentioned to us last week about very fire arms, that's why they had to have swipe badges to go in there. Um, it was very vital that they had security because they are armed police officers of our city, okay?
Okay.
So we okayed almost, what, ten thousand dollars worth of stuff last meeting for this facility, that's supposed to be basically, we have charged the city of Malvernale, okay? There was grants that were put forward, or appropriation put forward to turn, and plus we've got a lot of money for the field house, okay? Which I don't know what's happening with that, because we put a roof on, we did some other things, I had to get some carpet, because the field house from the outside don't look any different than it did a year and a half ago. Sadly, we were going to utilize some of that money to make a state of the art gym. Now, we didn't know it was just happy for our police officers. Our DPDW, ASD workers, if people in this, in the, in the, in city hall itself were to use a gym to better themselves, that's what is earshot, so they go out and drink with lunch or after work. That would be, uh, something that would be, in my eyes, non discriminatory about our workforce, you okay? And everybody can go use it. And that was, that was appropriated, I don't know what happened to it, I know I physically handed, I physically said, excuse me, I got the floor. Rich, you got the floor, you got the floor. I physically handed.
You're not going to be rude in this.
No, 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 but, you know what?
The devil's coming right off.
Please, please respect, we, we respect you. Okay, I appreciate it, but with that, I physically handed plans to the police department, because this was brought forth a long time ago. And it was designed by Ray Parker, which is our, um.
Barren, you're on girl.
There you go. Where did those plans go and what happened? Because right now, physically, my concern with the whole idea that we have down there is is that it is the, the physical building that we have that in right now. And I understand what it works, I, she, she's, she worked her butt off to get this, but you have our electrical room in there. You have, you have other amenities in it.
You showed her that room.
I, well, we showed, they, they were talking about putting a plant in there, and we were trying to cover it, but I actually had plans going up, if you want to say I, the body had plans going up for a state of the art. Ray Parker designs Planet Fitness for Planet Fitness, okay? He drew up extensive plans to have those locker rooms taken care of. There was going to be an entry doors put in those locker rooms, and the back door was locked. Now, there's a problem with having one entry, it's a confined space, you only have one entry throughout any type of. So the back door, we're going to be able, if the officer had a problem while they were in there, whoever was using the facility, they would be able to enter into Field House by a, a push, but it would be locked to the Field House. This would alleviate all of the alarm systems that are there, because it would have to have, it can have its own alarm. It's a state of the art set building, what happened to those points?
Why did that not go, why didn't that go forward?
Because it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Rich, I'll probably get that, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the nation, what happened to that?
I know, I know.
Okay, well, and once again. All right, well, and once again, like I said.
Who did get those plans too?
I did, I physically handed those plans to Jessica.
Okay, I know nothing about those plans.
Because they were, they were supposed to be, they were supposed to, they were supposed to be some form of.
She's still here.
Me, it's, we heard the chief, which at the time of, uh, Joe, and they were doing the grant for the, for the actual.
And she left, she couldn't handle it. She, she's like, over free gym.
The only issue I had was somebody violating any kind of language in the grant. If there wasn't any grant.
There you go. This is a different step, pretty whole plan. So through the chair, what is the motion up there?
So, we're revising, uh, secondly revised policy.
Through the chair.
Yes.
The proof through animal control, waymaster and ordinance, that's not what the motion was, that's what the second was.
It's not animal control.
No, that's what was said.
Oh.
It was motor carrier, animal control and ordinance.
More ordinance, so, are we amended it?
Well, we already amended it for the.
No, 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 same.
Yes, I amended to include everyone.
Oh, no.
We already have a motion for it.
So you have to.
So you have, you have the section.
I have, Frederick's made a motion and Philip Posky supported it.
So, then, just, just, put that in.
By, with us, the future, your, uh, ordinance officers and motor carrier, they take it off when they.
They've gone, started.
They are sworn officers.
Correct.
Why can't it determine, how would you say sworn officers, which would include that?
Chair.
Well, it was, but there was some issue, and.
That's why we gave it to the personnel, because it was sworn, but it is.
So, both ordinance officers and the motor carrier have been sworn in, they are, they are technically considered sworn officers.
A tumble sort of. To approve, uh, determine how to, all sworn officers of the Malvernale Police Department.
Member support? Does he get that, though? Okay. Are we good? Call vote.
Jason?
Yes.
Posky?
Yes.
Little Posky?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Eric Chet?
Yes.